Well, the call to order, I'd like to ask Chris Thompson to open us in prayer, please.
Right, and that. Calmness, and all of us, Lord, would respect each other.
Officially call the meeting to order. Here. Here. Atman. Now we need as far as approval of the agenda, does anybody have anything to? Go for the agenda. About minutes. None, could I get a motion to approve the? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. I have a, uh, protocol that I would like to read. Comments. A little bit lengthy, so y'all just bear with me. Greensville County Planning Commission has developed a protocol to ensure that commission meetings and citizen comments are productive and efficient. Proper decorum is maintained. The Planning Commission wants to emphasize that this protocol is intended to make the commission meetings and or citizens' comments as productive as possible. Protocol is as follows. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the Planning Commission. Time limit will be strictly enforced. Speaker will be advised when two minutes have elapsed. Will be advised when three minutes have elapsed. After all comments have been made by speakers at the public hearing, the applicant will be afforded three minutes to respond to comments made during the public hearing. Each speaker will be permitted to address the Planning Commission only once. Three-minute opportunity to speak cannot be transferred from one speaker to another. Speakers should face the Planning Commission and address their comments to the commissioners, and not to others who are present at the meeting. Speakers should not turn to face and address members of the audience. Planning Commission is conducting the citizens' comments period and or public hearing to receive comments from interested parties. Neither the commission nor its staff will respond to questions during the citizen comment period or public hearing, and neither the commission nor its staff will engage in a dialogue with speakers. However, after this meeting, county staff will follow up with citizens when appropriate. Planning Commission asks that everyone at the meeting to be respectful to others who are present, and asks that those present not applaud speakers. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, famatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Prior to beginning your comments, please state your name and your address for the record. There is a signup sheet for speakers. If you have not signed up and wish to speak, let county staff know just before the public hearing where citizens' comments begins, and your name will be added to the list of speakers. Thanks. Right, uh. Public hearing. Second. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we're now in public, uh, session. We're addressing SP two dash, uh, twenty twenty-five Virginia Tactical Shooting Academy, um, LLC. Floor is open to anyone that wants to speak for or ag- against.
Staff report, and the applicant has to give their presentation.
Goodness, sorry, y'all, I got ahead of myself.
Start with the staff report, once I, uh, finish the staff report, uh, if you have any questions on me, I'll take those questions. Everybody hear me? Right now. Alright. Alright, the applicant, Mr. Shawn Lewis of the Virginia Tactical Shooting Academy, is applying for a special use permit to establish an outdoor shooting range on two properties located on Goose Pond Road. Uh, those properties are identified as tax map parcel thirty-eight-two-D, which consists of thirty-three acres, and thirty-eight-two-E, which consists of sixteen and a half acres. Uh, the subject property is owned agricultural, I'm sorry. Uh, like I stated, the applicant is trying to establish a, uh, outdoor shooting range. Applicant's application, he has stated that a ten-foot-tall earthen berm will be constructed to surround all the shooting areas and serve as a safety backstop to contain projectiles and prevent ricochets, thus ensuring that all projectiles stay within the range boundaries. Shooting sheds and benches will be constructed at all firing points. The earthen berms and shooting sheds will help minimize noise impact on surrounding properties. In the application, the applicant states that the range will only be accessible to Virginia Tactical Shooting Academy members, authorized personnel, and students enrolled in his training classes. The range will not be open to the general public. The range will operate during daylight hours on Friday from twelve to four, Saturdays from eleven to four, and Sundays eleven to three. Uh, the applicant also states that a certified range safety officer will be on site at all times to ensure safety procedures are being followed. Look at the zoning ordinance, we find that the subject property is owned A-one agricultural. The agricultural district covers the largest portion of the county, which is presently occupied by farms, forests, conservation areas, and other types of rural uses. It is designed to protect these existing conditions and to encourage only that future development, which promotes the preservation of the rural qualities of the county. In addition, selected businesses and industrial uses may be permitted in the district, but only when the governing body finds that such development not only enables the rural characteristics of the county to be maintained, but is also in harmony with the county's economic development objectives. Greensville County does not have a specific development required, such as minimum acreage, setbacks from lot lines, setbacks from dwellings for an outdoor shooting range. However, an outdoor shooting range is an allowable use within the A-one district with the issuance of a special use permit. A special use permit shall not be issued unless it is determined that the proposed use would not be detrimental to the community. Proposal as submitted or modified should not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood of the proposed use. Among matters to be considered in the connect, among matters to be considered, congestion, noise, light, dust, odor, fumes, and vibrations with due regard for the time and other operation screening, and other matters which might be regulated to mitigate adverse impacts. The county may impose conditions to the special use permit in effort to mitigate these potential nuisances. When we look at the comprehensive plan, we find that the subject property is located outside of the urban development area within a rural area on the comp plan's future land use plan. The rural area classification includes land areas and the rural portions of the county where agricultural and forestal uses are the dominant land use. These areas provide ecological benefits such as open spaces, water share protection, while also playing a role as an economic and environmental resource of major importance. In the comp plans chapter titled, uh, Quality of Life, in the land use chapter, the comp plan addresses recreation. Uh, it calls for need to improve both public and private recreation. The actual character of the area that this, uh, shooting ranges propose matches the comp plan's description as well as the definition of the agricultural district as defined in the zoning ordinance. Being designated as a use requiring a special use permit in the zoning ordinance, it is an approved, provided appropriate safeguards when imposed to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Such safeguards are presented as conditions, which if imposed, will govern the proposed project of the property. While this use is not a daily use, it is a use that could produce nuisances such as noise and lead contaminations that could impact surrounding properties. Noise created during the operation of the range will be the nuisance that will be the hardest to, uh, mitigate. The construction of safety berms and shooting sheds will mitigate some of the noise that will be produced at the shooting range. However, noise could still be an issue for properties located adjacent to and near the shooting range. There are four dresses on Goose Pond Road that are approximately eight hundred and seventy-five feet to twelve hundred and fifty feet from the proposed range. The range hours as proposed in the applicant's application for the SUP will be included as a condition to the permit, thus minimizing the times that the shooting will occur. Lead contamination of soils and water is another concern that should be analyzed when designing and constructing the shooting range. Lead can be introduced into the environment at shooting ranges in one or more of the following ways. Each of these pathways is site-specific and may or may not occur at each individual range. Uh, you could have lead oxidizes when it's exposed today and dissolves when exposed to acidic water and soil. Lead bullets, bullet particles, and dissolved lead can be moved by stormwater runoff. Dissolved lead can mitigate through soils and groundwater. The proposed shooting range is located near wetlands identified on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services National Wetland Inventory Map. Uh, that map is included as attachment B in your agenda package. The National, uh, Wetland Inventory is a digitized map developed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services that provides information on potential location, size, and type of wetlands across the country. By implementing appropriate lead management at outdoor shooting ranges, range owners and operators can reduce the environmental and health risks associated with lead deposition, meet the legal requirements, and realize quantifiable benefits. Uh, the United States Environmental Protection Agency has a manual entitled Best Management Practices for Lead Shooting Ranges. I provided you with a link to that in your, the email that we sent you, it was a lengthy document, I didn't want to print and send all y'all that lengthy document. But, uh, the EPA does not have any regulatory authority. Uh, regulatory authority is left up to localities in the state of Virginia for shooting ranges, but they have a lot of suggestions for berm construction, and we call them in the industry BMPs, Best Management Practices, to reduce, uh, lead from migrating off of the property. It contains it, and then they also have, uh, lead, uh, you recruit the lead, they have to go through SIF, get the lead out every so often, it's, it's all of those types of best management practices to help reduce any effects from lead at the firing range, and all that's contained in that manual. Being that the proposed project will disturb more than ten thousand square feet, the applicant must ta- obtain an erosion incentive control land disturbance permit from Greensville County. The applicant must submit an erosion incentive control plan prepared by an engineer who is licensed in Virginia. Uh, this, uh, ENS plan will be review, reviewed and approved by the county's third-party, uh, plan reviewer, and then a land disturbance permit will be issued prior to any construction. Uh, DEQ stormwater permit, permit coverage must also be obtained for the proposed project since the project will disturb more than two acres, or more than one acre of land. The applicant must submit stormwater management plans prepared by an engineer licensed in Virginia for review and approval by the county's third-party plan reviewer, and then they must obtain permit coverage for DEQ prior to any land disturbance or construction activities taking place. Uh, any structure constructed upon the property will be subject to meet the requirements of the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. Uh, the applicant must also prepare a site plan showing the development of the property. That, that would show you everything, all the improvements, proposed improvements to the property. Uh, that site plan also goes to, uh, the county planning department for review, and it goes to the Virginia Department of Transportation for review. That might require a commercial interest, it just depends on, you know, what their access standards and stuff say when they do the review. And VDOT, uh, will notify the county of what improvements at the entrance will be required by VDOT, and that will become part of the conditions of the permit. Uh, as the planning commission, you have three options. You can recommend approval of the applications, you can recommend denial of the applications, or you can defer on the application to a future meeting for further discussion and consideration. As with all special use permit applications, uh, we have language in here, uh, to help you with your decision whether you decide to defer, to approve, or deny. If you decide to approve, staff recommends that you incorporate these conditions, and these conditions can be modified tonight if the planning commission wishes so. Uh, these conditions are contained on the last page of the staff report, and I've, I've touched on a lot of those conditions in the staff report. They must do the site plan, ENS plan, stormwater plan, construct the berms. Uh, the range operator must follow EPA's best management practices, uh, for lead recycling and environmental monitoring to prevent contamination. Uh, the range will be private and limited to VTSA members, and of course applicants, uh, not open to the general public. A range safety officer must be present at all times. I listed the hours of operation, and we're requesting that written permission be provided to the board of supervisors to allow entry by county staff or law enforcement to inspect the shooting range at any time. Uh, we have insurance requirements, uh, for the range. Individuals under eighteen years of age will be allowed to unify, utilize the facility provided they are accompanied by a parent or legal guardian, or they are under adult supervision assigned a release by the parent or guardian. And if this use is not established within two years from the issuance of the special use permit by the board of supervisors, or if the use ceases operation for a two-year period, the special use permit shall be null and void. I have any questions or concerns from the planning commission? Hearing none? Banks, I think, has a presentation he'd like to give, and then after that, you're welcome to ask questions of me or Mr. Banks concerning the application.
Staff report, Lynn.
They show you how to operate the?
I guess I'll figure it out. Can everybody hear me? Good evening, everybody. Hold on. Alright. My name is Shawn Banks, and I'm the founder and CEO of Virginia Tactical Shooting Academy. I appreciate the opportunity to have this chance, this chance to come speak with you. I'm here looking for approval, um, for a permit for a private outdoor shooting range. Now, I know how we've been portrayed, but I'm still excited to show you who we are, who I am. Like a few of you, I'm a veteran. I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a proprietor, a business owner. Virginia Tactical was established five years ago, after a personal experience of mine led me to start a bond, upon this journey of teaching people, educating people, not only about firearms, but about their rights as citizens of the United States of America. That's what I do. I have committed myself to learning all that I can about firearms, safety procedures, certification processes, then teaching other individuals what I've learned. The project that we're here to talk about today is not solely about recreation, nor is it really about unrestricted access. About responsibility, education, and of course, safety. That's what I do. What we are, what we are proposing is a facility based on, how do I say? Logic, common sense, as practices. Once again, it's not for public consumption. Our mission is to create a space where first-time gun owners can come shoot, learn, women seeking personal protection courses, my youth firearm safety courses, and where professionals can come get their certifications. Our range also will support the DCJS certification process or Department of Criminal Justice Services, as well as the Faith and Security Academy, which is a program where we go into churches, developing those church security teams, and teaching them how to better protect their congregations. Once again, it's not a pay-for-a-day type of situation. There will be no unsupervised activities at my range. Every element of my plan, from scheduling to oversight, is built around safety. We are committed, have been committed, to being responsible, educational, well-informed, and detailed in the training that we do and provide. We have always followed every law, proper, uh, maintained proper insurance certifications, and we've always taken our role seriously in the community. We've built that. The proposed range includes professionally-built berms, ten feet high. Right? If we can understand how tall ten feet is, which also will insulate that range from any stray bullets, noise mitigation, keeping any wildlife or any particular people safe. As we look at the site plan, the shooting direction is due north on the site plan. Don't shoot across, we don't shoot to, towards people's homes, or any other public or residential areas. All of my members, all future members, would have to take the United States Concealed Carry Association's Range Safety Officer certification. It's a requirement. So everybody should know, will know what to do, how to handle the weapons that they already own, that we already own. We've established before, we don't shoot overnight, we don't shoot when it's nighttime, or very early in the morning, that's not what we do. My range will be open from noon to four on Friday, eleven-four on Saturday, and eleven to three on Sunday. As far as traffic is concerned, I know I have Mike Bailey here with me, who is an engineer who can speak to that. But being that we are not a public shooting range, there is not the opportunity for people to come in and out all times of the day or night. I know we've had quite a few concerns made, raised over this time, and that's okay, and I wanted to address them directly. Once again, not accessible to the public, low traffic, and as far as the EPA's best practice, I want to, can I address that really quickly? So, it's recommended that in high-use operational shooting range, that the berms are sifted and reshaped every one to three years. For a medium-traffic shooting range, these are public shooting ranges, by the way, that the ranges should be sifted and reshaped every three to five years, and for low-traffic ranges, that the berms be sifted and reshaped every four to seven years. But as I have stated in my earlier plans, that the goal amendment is to have them reshaped every four years. My shell casings will be recycled and reused, and on the berms themselves, the foliage, the grass, the sunflowers, based on EPA's best practices, should be planted, will be planted, because that is what absorbs the finite amount of lead to be developed over a short period of time. So with all of these things in place, along with the overhead shooting sheds that we have, and the baffles that we will have, along with the berm to mitigate the noise and the sound, along with having people or parking inside of the tree line, I'm not sure how many of you have had the opportunity to go out and see the site, but it's not visible from the road, and then I intend to keep it that way. But I appreciate you allowing me to take this time, um, to have this conversation. Um, and do I have time to go into the site plan itself? Wonderful. Biggest things that I wanted to discuss about the parcels themselves, um, we have slight overlap between parcel thirty-eight point-two-dash-E. That's mainly going to be due to berm construction. However, but the primary source of the land would, um, excuse me, of the project would be on, uh, Mr. Grant's land, um, at approximately a hundred and fifty feet wide by three hundred feet long, with ten, ten-foot berms wrapped around on three sides of the range. Okay? Now, proposed settle rates of that berm within the next two years would roughly drop down to eight feet. Okay? Which will still allow for sufficient coverage as it pertains to containing the land, the lead, and any noise associated with the project. Now, the range is surrounded by existing cleared land that is, uh, not used or utilized that currently at the moment. Also has an existing tree line around the properties. And is only accessed by a private access road leading from the street. Now, directly next to the adjoining property lines, we still have the Grants land and their permission and say-so for us to be there. Now, I'm not if, sure if everybody's able to see the road near the bottom of the site plan. It is a relatively smaller road. However, anywhere between 10 or anywhere, I would say, between five and 10 cars per se. And I know Mr. Bailey would be more inclined to speak on that than I am, being him being the traffic engineer. But I like this view here because it paints the overall picture of how far away from the road we would be and secluded behind tree lines. If anybody has any questions specifically about that, I'm willing to address that, address those questions to the best of my ability and/or lean on Mr. Mike Bailey. I appreciate your time and thank you for your consideration.
Before we conclude, sorry, this portion of the meeting, I just want to let you know as a result of the public advertisements and the adjacent property notices, we received a lot of feedback. As far as emails are concerned, we had 55 emails from people that were against the project. We had 13 emails from people in support of the project. We also received a petition from 88 people that were in favor of the project. And then as far as letters of support, we received 116 letters of support in favor of the project. I got a few more. They were coming in today like hotcakes. So it might be one or two more when I get back to the office. Had a lot of, a lot of public comment, you know, based on, on the letters and emails we received. Not any other questions? You can open up the floor to public comment if y'all don't have any questions of myself or Mr. Banks.
Commissioner, have any questions at this time?
I, I would prefer hearing what they have to say, and I'll make my statement after.
Looks like we're, we're good to go. So we'll open the floor up for anybody who wants to speak for or against the project.
Susan Gillam, 467 Horseshoe Road, Jarrett, Virginia, 23867. I'm part-owner of land on 603, 6034 Low Ground Road. And I've already had an incident with bullets coming through our house. One almost hit me as I was walking through the door. So I'm, I'm not in favor of this. And besides, there's been some shootings. There's something going on down there lately. We've been hearing the noise and don't know where it's at. And we're like, you know, hysterical about it. My sister, she has dementia, and every time she hears the bullets, it just freaks her out. So I'm just not for this. I'm sorry.
Michael Stevens?
Michael Stevens, 1182 Newsome Lane, Emporia, Virginia. I just want to point out that the 88 people that signed the petition, I never seen a petition to sign anything, or nobody has asked me whether I was for or against this. And I'm less than a mile and a half away as the crow flies through the woods. In addition to saying that, I think before we consider adding something like this to the county, the county should consider adding a firearm safety training course to the high school for all students to take. Because a thing like this would undoubtedly, you know, make other people interested in doing something like this. So that's one thing I think that should be done before anything is considered such like this. And
Two minutes.
It speaks for itself that there's already been plenty of issues with safety, and it's, it's great that they have plans in place to prevent anything from happening, but the problem is it's already happened. I don't know whether common sense and good judgment was when the issue was already occurring and has since been occurring. Always traffic is concerned. I mean, it may not be, it may not be that many cars at the time, but what I understand is 600 and some are members of this organization. And at some point, they'll be traveling on roads that are already not fit for the people of the county to travel on. Anyway, thank you. I'm not in favor of this. Thank you for your time.
Stevens. Marcus Simmons?
Oh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marcus Simmons, and my address is 9205 Tweed Place in Glen Allen, Virginia. And I'm here to speak in favor of you, I'm here to speak in favor of you granting the licensure for the shooting range. Now, I just wanted to say that I've had some very personal interaction with Mr. Banks, and I'm here to assure you that his emphasis is on nothing but safety. He's above and beyond anybody that I've ever met as far as shooting is concerned, and I've done a little bit of it myself. He's very strict about the, any safety procedures that, you know, that, that should be in place, and he adheres to making sure that all of his students and all of his members adhere to those safety practices as well.
That's two minutes.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Banks, he's, as you already know, he's a, he's, he's a shop owner. He's a gun shop owner with about, you know, with, with many years of experience. And that experience is going to carry over into what he does here in Greenville County at the shooting range. And again, I just want to assure you that safety is going to be always at the top of the list. You should also know that Mr. Banks, in my interaction with him, I find him to be a man of high integrity, a man who keeps his word. And he says that he's going, if there's anything that he said he's going to do with, as far as assuring you that all safety procedures and all the safety measures are going to be put in place, you can be assured that he's going to do that.
One minute, Mr. Simmons.
Lastly, I just wanted to say that as far as, with the shooting range itself, there could be some, that could be, I think there will be some economic impact as well to the, to the county of Greensville. And that the members who will be coming here on the, who will be coming to Greensville on the weekends to do, you know, to, to take part in the, at the shooting range, I can see where there will be using local restaurants, probably hotels, because some of the members come from, you know, quite, you know, quite far away as far as distance, and may not want to go back, you know, after their shooting sessions. Well, thank you. Yeah. So economic effects was the last thing I wanted to say, but thank you very much.
Susan Grigg?
Hi, I'm Susan Grigg from 800 Goose Pond Road, which is approximately 1,400 feet from this proposed location. I would like to play something for you from, that was recorded from my front porch.
Two minutes, Ms. Grigg.
That was a one-minute recording from my front porch on a Saturday afternoon in October. That's not what you want to hear on Saturday afternoon on your front porch, let alone for five hours. We're hunters. We're gun owners. We are all about gun safety. That's not what this is about. This location, if you draw a one-mile circle radius of this location, there are 24 homes and one church that has services on Sunday. I'm asking you not to approve this special use permit. This is not the right location for something like this. Thank you for your time.
James Penny or Denny? I'm not sure which. Please forgive me. Maybe.
Gentlemen of the council, James Denny, 7640 Strath Road, Enrico, Virginia. I was on site as a student the day that the incident happened that has brought us all here this evening. Past eight months, in my training and experience, I know what went wrong. I know how it needs to be corrected. And I'm a certified RSO. That's a Range Safety Officer. It was one of the problems we had in October. So the, we know the problems. The problems have been addressed by Banks. The proposal that you see, all members have to have the same training I have, have to know the same rules that I have. The design is taken into consideration the noise, the lead, and any stray bullets. There won't be.
Minutes, Mr. Denny.
In times of public anxiety, firearms and firearm classes increase exponentially. With a firearm, you need the training and you need practice. Practice at an outdoor range is much more realistic and much better than at an indoor range because you're allowed to move, you're allowed to change position, reload, clear malfunctions. Realistic conditions. Oh, I meant to say draw from a holster, which most indoor rangers do not allow. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Sterling Elliott?
My name's Sterling Elliott. I live in 2006 Rolling Acres Road, Emporia. We own the farm joint at the back of this range. So you'd be, all the firing will be done exactly to our farm. I hunt. My family hunts down there. We have people farming this land. This is going to be a tactical range, and I've been down there when they shoot. It's somewhere you don't want to be. I think it disvalues our property by having this range there. Bullets that hit these trees on our farm will do away with any timber rights that we would have in the future of selling on account of this range. I feel for the farmers that farm in this land and people up there with these high-powered rifles shooting. And I don't think a 10-foot berm is no ways tall enough for what they're planning on doing at this range.
Janice Elliott?
Janice Elliott, 2006 Rolling Acres Road, Emporia, Virginia. Rest, our property is directly adjacent to this firing range. And while they moved the firing range back toward, so they would have a frontage, it made it that close, much closer to our farmland. They've already seen the difference when my family goes to hunt because there's not wildlife there like it used to be. We addressed that about the negative effect of it with the timber because some firing ranges, but their berm's are 30 feet tall. So 10-foot berm is not going to stop it. And I do notice, he says over here that the firing direction is angled slightly left along the property lines away from the dwellings and water sources. Well, that's directly in line with our farm. And he also says that they're focused on safety and responsibility for gun ownership. But there, as he addressed the 600 and some numbers, and there are online videos that show assault-style weapons, not a regular handgun or a regular shotgun, but army-type guns, which should be, you know, for the army. And we don't need the interior as shooters or anyone that wants to use assault-style weapons in our area. Four to seven average twice a week on the weekends. Their videos show hundreds of people at those events that they have. So I respectfully ask that if you should decide to approve that, taking in concern all of the environmental issues and the issues of sound, that you would ban any kind of assault weapon or rifle that could be used in that type of activity.
Patrick Brown?
Hello, my name is Patrick Brown. I will be currently at 111 Moore's Lane, just south of the shooting range. I drive every, every day back and forth from Emporia, from Chesterfield to Emporia. My wife and I are currently building a home on Moore's Lane, the shooting range. We cannot wait to raise our two daughters and create a life for them that I wish I had growing up in a simpler and quieter life. I believe it is the planning commission's job to guide Greenville County in which direction it shall go to grow this town and better the community. There are so many pros and cons to the proposed shooting range, but the cons heavily outweigh the pros. Nobody is here to argue second or remem- Nobody is here to argue second amendment rights or the use of firearms, but we are here to express our concerns to the board, that we are the ones being directly affected by the shooting range. The sound alone is enough to run anybody off. I will never forget the afternoon I was in the 800 Goose Pond Road yard with my four-year-old and two-year-old daughter, the day they started shooting semi-automatic weapons. The look on the two daughters' faces once they heard, which sounded like World War III, was a look no father should have to see on their children's face. We went inside, which still was not enough to drown out the noise, but it was all we could do to calm them down. We spent the entire Saturday afternoon inside, and the next day on Sunday morning, they were back again shooting. This is not fair for the neighbors of the shooting range to have to put up with this noise and the safety concerns that the range brings. I believe the two most important criterias for an outdoor shooting range to be passed is that it be far enough away for anybody that is near it could be hit by a stray bullet, and that the ranges should be far enough away for residential homes that would have to put up with the nuisance. There are several homes a few yards away from the proposed range with small children at almost half the homes on Goose Pond Road. If Greensville County thinks that they would benefit from an outdoor range, I propose that they help those involved in relocating it to somewhere it will not be a nuisance to the surrounding neighbors. I would like to close with a picture of an outdoor gun range that I have visited in the past. The closest home to the gun range is in a four-mile radius in Mann's Harbor. The second picture depicts the same distance from the proposed gun range in the low grounds. As you can see, there are homes from Skippers, and it reaches all the way out to the airport on 58. The Outer Banks Gun Range has done a good job making sure that nobody has to hear the noises and creates a safe distance where accidents cannot happen. I would hope anybody wanting to build an outdoor gun range would follow the same model as a courtesy to the surrounding community. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will deny the proposed gun range for all those
Mary White?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mary White, my address is 6011 Black Snake Court, Pennsylvania, Virginia. I'm co-owner of the parcel 38-2F. Anyway, I am co-owner or partial owner of the lot 38-2F, which is beyond, over from the place where the gun range is proposed to be. Now initially, I had, my concerns were, and I'll just list my concerns, because they were legitimate concerns, but what I have found out from my research and from what we've heard here today, and from the, from the speakers of the proposed range, it was basically the noise, noise pollution, safety, soil and water testing, runoff, property value that could be negatively affected. However, I have, I am confident that the mitigations that are in place will be put in place, and that they will be followed up by, I know EPA is not going to be the direct entity to do the follow-up, but the county will, to make sure those things are done. So with that said, I will not take up the entire three minutes, I'll just finish by saying I am, I am at this point in favor of the range.
James Ray?
Had vast experience with firearms, firearm safety, I've been an instructor. Things that I don't like about this is the berms are not high enough, have they done a ricochet study? Ricochets can go almost as far as a bullet just shooting in the air can go. Have they done ballistics? Are they shooting only handguns? Are they shooting 5.56 rifles? Are they shooting any bigger calibers? All these questions need to be answered. And there is some stuff that they can install to help mitigate the noise, and one of them should be on the south end of the range. I think there's a lot more people on the south end than there is on the north end, and once that sound goes, it doesn't care, it's like a cone that just keeps spreading. I'm not opposed to it, but I'd like to have more questions answered about what they do. And another thing to consider, don't shoot on Sunday. Give the people around there one day off. If they, they start shooting on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or something like that, leave Sunday alone. People want to be with their family, in their houses, and quiet. Thank you.
Ezra Baptist Church, PO Box 288, Low Ground Road, 6279 is our address. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed establishment of a shooting range in Ezra Baptist Church, located at 6279 Low Ground Road. While I understand and respect the rights of individuals to engage in lawful recreational activities, I believe that placing a shooting range near a house of worship raises serious concerns for the safety, peace, and spiritual well-being of the surrounding community. Churches serve as sanctuaries for reflection, worship, and fellowship. The presence of a shooting range nearby where a loud gunfire will be a regular occurrence would severely disrupt the environment. It risks disturbing worship services, prayer meetings, funerals, weddings, and community outreach. The sound of gunfire can be deeply unsettled, especially for children, elderly members, and individuals dealing with trauma. We have services outside. Moreover, safety is a paramount concern. The possibility of stray bullets or accidents, however rare, cannot be entirely dismissed. Families and community members deserve to feel secure when they attend services or participate in church-related activities. There are undoubtedly more appropriate locations for such a facility, areas that are adjacent to places of worship, schools, or residential neighborhoods. A responsible and thoughtful site selection process should be prioritized, minimizing communities' disruption and risk. I urge you to reconsider the placement of this shooting range and seek alternative locations that do not infringe upon the peace and purpose of sacred community spaces. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Dexter Grant, 8414 Tyler Lane in Rico, Virginia. I'm supportive of the gun range, just for the simple fact that he's going to be teaching gun safety, and I understand that it could be some issues, but I think he's addressed a lot of the issues that have been presented to him tonight, and we need more safety in gun training versus just turning individuals loose and say, hey, let's go out and target practice. It's a supervised location, it's not open to the public, and I'm sure the issues that he's heard tonight, he will address, but I assure you with dealing with Sean for the last three or four years, his first and foremost situation is dealing with safety, making sure that everybody's in a safe operation of firearms.
My name is William Porch, and I'm a resident of 10642 Low Ground Road in Emporia. I want to just repeat what somebody said a minute ago, I think Sundays should be sacred. I'm upset enough that we have hunting on Sunday, and to have more noise on Sunday is just something I think we can do without. But if the board decides to approve this, I think there's several questions, perhaps some conditions that should be set if it is approved. For example, the maximum caliber that could be fired. Normal AR-15-type weapons are 5.5, 5.6, anyway, 5.65, and the others are 7.62. And I would say, we don't know if they might be firing 50 caliber. 50 caliber has really long range. And I happen to know that one of the members of the board is an engineer, and I would ask him to think, how much elevation would it take from a gun that's fired 300 feet from a 10-foot berm for that projectile to go over a 10-foot berm? It wouldn't be very much, and I'm sure you can figure that out. The other thing I would ask is, who would own the weapons that are being used there? Would they be rented, or would the people that are being trained own the weapons? Or would they be maximum semi-automatic, or would be full automatic? Or now we have the reset, forced reset triggers, which are almost automatic, and a lot of lead would be flying around. Would they be using suppressors? Some of the answers that were given to the questions that were raised on the form that was sent around concerning traffic, and one of the answers was one-way traffic. It's not one-way traffic on the Low Ground Road, nor is it one-way traffic on Goose Pond Road. So I ask you just to consider these questions if you should decide to approve it. I am personally opposed to it.
I live at 10642 Low Ground Road, and it's not very far if you cut through the woods to get to where the proposed shooting area would be. I am descendant of people who've lived there for, I don't know how many years, but at least my great-grandfather went off to fight in a war. I'm just amazed and shocked to think that there would be shooting in that area. I'm really opposed to it, and would think that it violates my sense of sanctuary, my sense of Greensville County, my sense as a citizen that I would have to be subjected to that.
I've got two signatures here that I cannot read, so I'm going to embarrass myself and take a stab at it. Is there a Gregory Galbraith here? He received an email at the office from a gentleman by that name, and this may be that name, if there's anyone here by that name. Sorry, it was line 15 and line 16 on our sign-up sheet, but I cannot read them. I've still got more. I still have more. I just thought I'd give a stab at it, thinking I'd found the solution. At the end, we will try this again, and I'll bring the signature page around and let someone look, and they may recognize their signature. All right, Bailey Banks Lewis?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Brown. I currently reside at 7207 Maple Summit Lane in Mosley, Virginia. We are currently building a house at 111 Moores Lane, which is directly across from the proposed gun range. We are moving back to Greensville County to enjoy time with our two small children. We are both full-time working parents. The weekends are our only time to spend with our kids. Our kids go to school during the week, we work during the week. That's our time to spend with the kids. This has already caused a nuisance to our family. This will very much disrupt our time outdoors. The Greensville County zoning ordinance states the following about special use permits. "The use shall not be operated as to cause a nuisance to the neighborhood in which it is located." This, like I said, has already caused a nuisance and will continue to cause a nuisance to our family. I have some EPA concerns as well. The EPA Best Management Practices, which is stated in the staff report, cites the NRA Range Source Book, which has a 20-foot minimum earthen backstop. They also say in the EPA Best Management Practice that the earthen backstop is generally between 15 and 20 feet high, with a slope as steep as possible. I also wanted to share these quotes directly from that Best Management Practice for outdoor shooting ranges from the EPA that you've all been sent. A direct quote, like I said, "To date, most litigation concerns have been at shotgun ranges where the shotfall zone impacts water or wetland areas. The potential environmental and human health risks are greater at these ranges." Although these do not, the earthen berms do not fall directly into the wetlands, like I said, I already believe they're too low, there are wetlands, if you look at the wetland map that's in the staff report, that are surrounding the, every, on all sides of the of the proposed gun range. So these are valid concerns, they're, the guns, the bullets will go directly towards the wetlands. Another direct quote is, shooting into, and this is in bold in the EPA Best Management Practice, "Shooting into water bodies or wetlands should not occur." And then it also says, a direct quote, "Shooting into water bodies or wetlands is not an option for ranges that want to survive in the future." I also have some concerns with the roads. As you know, those of you who have been down there, there's already, there are already smaller roads. My concerns are people that are unfamiliar with driving on those types of roads, are coming to visit, what if there's an emergency, one of my kids needs an ambulance and they can't get to it? What if my house catches on fire, and a fire truck is already going to have a hard enough time getting to my road, but with other cars, people that aren't sure of what's going on?
20 seconds.
I also want to say, you know, how many of these people that are in favor are from Greensville County? Greensville County residents have trusted you to make good decisions for them. Thank you.
I'm just, I heard the owners talking about how well they're going to
they're to satisfy you guys and all the ordinances of the, of the county. I thought before, so he's trying to prove to you, he's uh, whenever the state, county, all the ordinances are fulfilled.
Charlie Robinson.
Charlie Robinson, I live on 4259 Purdy Road in Emporia, Virginia. And I'm talking, uh, in behalf of Clasvia Baptist Church. And, uh, I'm a trustee there in the church and I got some, uh, more, uh, church members that came down here and with the support to deny this, uh, for to deny the, uh, range. And, uh, don't see anything positive that gonna come from this shooting range besides just the people that coming down and, and do the shooting, leaving and, and bringing this, uh, this noise in, in the area. Because it's interfering with our, our church, our church. We have Sunday schools on, at 10 o'clock and on Sundays and, and other days that we have, uh, services. And it interfering with that. Our church been there for approximately 160 years. And, uh, nothing, anything like this ever come through. And, uh, really see, see everything, I see is negative. Traffic, noise, and I really don't see anything that positive gonna come from this. And I ask you each and every one of you, if you consider yourself, if you, this range was living beside you and you heard the young lady, uh, that had that, that recording, if you had a, uh, here there beside your house, it would be easily for you to say, no, this not gonna, it's not a good thing for Greensville County. You know what I'm saying? So I ask each and every one, think hard on it, think hard on it. Because, and not only that, just the safety of it, you know what I'm saying? I hear one young man say that, uh, that, uh, indoor range, uh, is, is, uh, is outdoor range is more safer than indoor range. Common sense. Hello? Do you really think so? And then, uh, we ask you, what about the insurance? What kind of insurance do you have? Do you have insurance for a stray bullet to go and kill somebody? Do you have that kind of insurance? It's, it's just too many negatives there for Greensville County. We need to pick up a bow and not pick up a gun. Thank you.
Charlie Gregg.
I'm slow, I don't know why I'm stupid, but my son-in-law spoke tonight. I found my granddaughters. My wife, my family, my son, his future daughter-in-law. They're all moving in like grandma. It's my daughter, my son-in-law, my two granddaughters, love of my life. He had to explain to them what was going on that day. It broke my heart. It broke my heart. I didn't know what to do. And I've got this long speech. To heck with that speech. This is not what needs to be in Greensville County. Why Greensville County? Why us? All right, why us? Why are you coming to Emporia? Everyone that spoke against it lives somewhere else. We don't need this. It might be a place for it somewhere. It's not here. They've applied in Brunswick County. I think they've applied in other counties. They've been denied everywhere else. It's not a good fit for communities. It's not a good fit for, for residents. It's, it might be a place for it somewhere and I don't know where that is, but it needs to be somewhere else. We've got a nice community in the Low Ground Roads. I got my son, my daughter, all coming to live with me. And I'm really upset about this. And it's just, it's just not fair. And, um, I, I ask you to please, 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 please deny this request. Thank you very much.
All right, we have two people on our list that signed up to speak. If you signed and you have not gotten up to speak, would you please come forward? Okay, maybe they just signed in. They didn't sign up to comment. All right, that's the end of our comment session.
Right, uh, Lynn, is this time for, um, Mr. Banks to? Banks, would you like to, to speak in, uh, response to any of these comments?
Well, I'll keep it short and sweet. To this point, um, if we're talking about the range itself, I have 27 members of my range. I have 688 members of my storefront, uh, storefront as members of Virginia Tactical Shooting Academy as a whole, but not of the range itself. So I just wanted to address that, number one. As far as the decimal readings at the, the property lines and the limits and things like that, we have, um, already done that to a certain degree. And the last thing, you know, I, that I really wanted to address is overhead baffles, um, as I stated in my opening, um, monologue. Overhead baffles not only control sound, um, but they also, uh, control any accidental discharges, uh, that may, or would happen to, uh, go at a particular angle or go over the proposed berms. Um, I, I would address the wetlands and stuff, but nah, actually. No, I think that's all.
All the speakers, Lynn, is it time for us to go back into regular session? Can I get a motion? Please go back into regular session. Second? All those in favor of going back into the regular session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Right, we're in regular session, uh.
I guess, okay, I, I will say this. As I sit here, I made one of the greatest discovery when I moved to Greensville County. About three tenths of a mile from my house, there's a shooting range in Greensville County. And so I made a phone call. I contacted the planning director and I count, contacted the sheriff office. And I wanted to know, was that shooting range legal? And they both told me yes. So on Sunday morning, there's no regulations there, I don't think, because whatever, buries, whatever, that, that. But on Sunday mornings, I think because they worked on the week, those are the days they choose to shoot on Sunday morning. I run down the road, I play in the yard, I do anything else I wanna do. And there's nobody convincing me in here and I'm three tenths of a mile away. And I actually went down and measured how far the gate was to the next, I guess where the tree line was. I don't know what that, where the property line was. I was told 875 feet. I'm gonna go with that with some different distance right there. What we're talking about right now is some organized. What we're talking about right now, we will have all kinds of regulation in place. Where I'm at, when I hear all my shooting on Sunday morning, I don't know where the bullets go. I don't know where they don't go. I've been there for 30 years. Ain't that one hit me yet. I've been there for 30 years and the same one ain't bothered me yet. So what I did was this is, so we can be a little bit on the more scientific side right here. State of Virginia, in the state of Virginia, in Greensville County, the decimal is 70 percent, 70 decimals. Anything over 70 decimals, you can make a complaint as far as loud noise is concerned. Now, if I'm outside, which I did today, I cut my grass. The decimal on the alarm more is between 75 and 20, 75 and 100 percent. And I'm gonna assume most of y'all cut y'all grass. And I think, I don't think that noise bother y'all too much when you cutting your grass, 'cause I was out there for two hours a day cutting my grass. Also, I did this. If you look at the, what we're proposing right here at 875 feet away, I did not even include no barriers. I did not include no vegetation. I did not include any trees. If you're 875 feet away, the decimal will be 80 percent. 80 decimals, 80 decimals, which the county allows 70. Now, if I'm gonna put up, and when I went down there and I, I did, I did mark it off, it was about three tenths of a mile. I don't know what it's 80, 870. It was about three tenths of a mile. So if you got the vegetation and you got those barriers, then the best you gonna hear is gonna be about 60, which is below what the county allows. So we wanna talk about noise, but in Greensville County, we have ordinance. And the ordinance in Greensville County says if I'm at 70 percent or less, you can't complain. You cannot make a complaint if it is 70% or less. And so if we look at what we're doing right here tonight, and I would love to sympathize with you all, but I sit just as close to a shooting range as y'all do. I get up on Sunday morning, I take my little run down the road while they're busy shooting their gun and I ain't had a stray bullet hit me yet and I'm not afraid. So what we're talking about here tonight is this is, we're talking about the county ordinance. And as long as this thing is complied with county ordinance, I have no situation and no problem with it.
Sir, I'm sorry.
I, I, I have a, a comment and a thought. Um, I, I'm a hunter, so I don't like feet. I like yards. So I looked in the staff report, 291 yards to the closest house. Okay, in my, I live on the Purdy Road. I've been a lifelong citizen of this community. Um, and I've had people recreational shooting. Used to shoot next to my mom's house, a distance of this, and on Sundays in her house, you could hear it. And it was seven or eight, um, Sundays of summer, okay? Not Friday, Saturday and Sunday of every week. I cannot imagine the nuisance that this is gonna cause. And the noise is my primary concern. More so than the other issues listed. They concern me as well, but this noise does concern me. And this is by a special use permit for a reason, because it is this type of use. And the other thing that I, y'all, some of you have heard me say when I was on the other side of this podium, when you talk about property rights, your property rights stop at the point that you prevent me from being able to peacefully use my land. The other thing that brings to my attention in this, and I read this packet, I've read both. I've gone back and forth, inside and out. I'm a second amendment guy. I'm greatly concerned about the noise and the ability of the citizens of Greensville County in that area. I would say to my planning commission members, you just have to ask yourself personally, would you want this right up under you? And my other thought on that is, when I looked and read, are all these emails, if you email me and emailed us, I read every single one. All the emails, everything. I read one in favor with an Emporia address. One. Everybody else is Henrico, Richmond, wherever you have it. Well, I was, to me, placed on this planning commission to represent the citizens, citizens of Greensville County. I think that's who we represent. I can't imagine this being next to me, uh, with me, I've got a daughter that's getting ready to move back here too. I can't imagine my weekends dealing with this gun shooting going on every Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So that's just my opinion.
Like I repeat what I said, I didn't get a choice. It was already there. Nobody came into me and gave me anything about county ordinance or anything else. It was already there. So I'm, I, I face that every Sunday. I face it every Sunday, so I'm not gonna sympathize with anybody. Because I have it and that noise, and nobody can convince me about all this noise, 'cause every Sunday morning, they're there now shooting. So you got, nobody can convince me that that noise gonna bother you that much, 'cause I've been there for 30 years. So like, if, if it bother, get used to it.
Well, my, uh, my, uh, experience with target practice, shooting ranges, has been the complete opposite of Mr. Kane's. Uh, the, the same, uh, fellows that were shooting that Chris referred to are about, maybe a half mile or a little more from my house by the way the crow flies. Those Sunday afternoons, I guess it was several Sundays over a year or two period, they would target practice, just two of them, for two to three hours. And it was absolutely miserable. I could not wait for them to stop. Unfortunately, I don't have grandchildren. Have pets that were afraid of loud noises, thunderstorms, fireworks, gunfire. It terrifies them. They run for cover. Just for, for us to have to, and I didn't complain. I didn't call the sheriff. I wanted to be a good neighbor. I knew who it was. Friends with, with these fellows. I'm a, uh, a hunter, a gun owner. I target practice. But these days, if I shoot skeet or target practice, I'm very conscious of where I am and how long I, I do it. Really admire Mr. Banks for his service, outreach, for his gumption in putting all this together. Think he's got a good project, but it's just the wrong location. Got to be more remote areas if they, if they want to stay in, in the Greensville community. There are got, there, there are bound to be locations that are more suitable for this project. And it was mentioned, our zoning ordinance. Right out of the staff report, under zoning ordinance, "Special use permit shall not be issued unless it is determined that the proposed use would not be detrimental to the community." We, we try and be objective with, talk about decibels and talk about distances. But try and be objective, but, and I know detrimental is a subjective term. But I, I think it's hard to avoid that word and not use that word in this situation. Proposed use is not suited for the location because it's detrimental to all the neighbors in that community. Like to hear from, from others if you're willing to speak up and give your opinions.
There are no one. I'd like to make a motion.
All good? No other comments? Hey, then I'll open the, uh, the floor.
I'd like to make a motion. And my motion is to deny the project because it will adversely affect the health, safety or welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. It will be detrimental to public welfare or interest to property improvements in the neighborhood. And I'm adding this, Lynn, to what you had written. Noise will cause a nuisance to the neighborhood in which it is located. So my motion is to deny the project as presented.
There are second? I'll second that motion. No further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Call, vote. Ms. Wiggins? I wanna wait a few more minutes and let her. Okay. Mr. Kane?
No.
No.
Mr. Thompson? Robinson?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd? Odom?
Explain that to vote yes is in favor of the motion.
The motion was to deny the applicant's application. So if you are not in favor of the application, you would vote yes. The motion is to deny. Made a motion to deny. So you either vote yes in favor of his motion or no, against his motion. Voted no, you did. Okay, Mr. Kane, you voted no, you, Chapman, you voted yes, correct? Robinson, you voted yes. Chapman, you voted yes, I already said that, I'm sorry. Mr. Thompson, yes. Byrd wanted to defer. Odom? Anton? Robbins, I meant, Mr. Flowers? Wiggins, did you want to vote? Vote as yes or no?
Yes.
Second to tally everything, so we had had one no, one two, seven yeses, one defer. So Mr. Thompson's abstain, I'm sorry. Abstain or did you want to vote? First, so we went past you. Want to abstain? All right, so we had one abstain, one no, and seven yeses. I carried. Now, this is just a recommendation. This recommendation will be taken to the Board of Supervisors at their, don't hem a calendar, I apologize, at their July meeting, which is first Monday in July at 6 o'clock. Their vote will be the final say-so on the applicant's request. Class 7, he just informed me.
And do we go to other matters now, if there are any?
Yes, I don't have any other matters, you know, if there are any questions about anything you won't ask me about that's going on, I'd be glad to answer them.
Oh, Lynn, do you wanna recognize our new member?
Yes. Ms. Byrd, we want you to get up and give a speech. No, I'm just joking. Ms. Byrd is Ms. Diane Barnes Rhodes's daughter, and she has accepted the position on the planning commission, so welcome, Ms. Byrd. Look forward to working with you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay. Second? Okay, we're adjourned.